I'm going to call the meeting of February 18th, 2025 to order. We could be in with a moment of silence. If you would, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We are always happy to have you with us. We follow a written agenda, which is available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, local government TV station, which is available on Spectrum, Channel 16, and Hotwire, Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, wsrgtv.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website at SalisburyNC.gov/VIDEOS. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a motion. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, oath of office to be administered to Mayor Tamara Sheffield, Mayor Pro Tem Harry McLaughlin Jr., and Councilmember Susan Klutz. Connie, turn it over to you.
At this time, Mayor Sheffield, if you'll come up, I will venture through the office of office to Mayor Sheffield.
I state your name.
I, Tamara Sheffield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as mayor.
The duties of my office as mayor.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Go ahead, Connie.
At this time, if Mayor Pro Tem Harry McLaughlin will join me.
Okay, if you will place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Harry McLaughlin Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as mayor pro tem.
The duties of my office as mayor pro tem.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And at this time, if Councilmember Susan Klutz will join me, please. If you will place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Susan Ware Klutz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Join me as we welcome Councilmember Klutz to join us at the dais. So while we have a lot of supporters here, just like to take a moment to hear any comments. Councilmember Klutz, we'll start with you.
Start with me. Sure. Well, let me just begin by saying that, of course, you know, our city's been through a devastating loss with the loss of our former mayor. And I met with her regularly, and so I know firsthand exactly what she thought of this council and the staff of the city of Salisbury and the people of the city of Salisbury. And so there was no way I could say no. I really want to help and do anything I can. I know we've got a wonderful new mayor and mayor pro tem and council, and I will do everything I can to help. But thank you all for being here today and thank you for your support.
I would just like to congratulate everyone. Carlton, welcome to city council again. Harry, welcome to your new position as mayor pro tem. Tamara, congratulations, welcome to being mayor. Susan, it's a pleasure to have you on board. Have a good council here.
Thank you, David. You got anything?
Just found out after all these years that Susan's brother was one of my classmates. When I heard her middle name, I thought, well, there's only so many layers in Salisbury. It's a small world. We're extremely fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
You bring a wealth of experience to the council, and there's no knowledge like old knowledge, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Just make us better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carlton. Mayor Pro Tem, Harry McLaughlin.
All right, this is a different view. I miss you, Connie, way back now. But, you know, we have a, we've gone through a lot of changes in the last several months, but I think we still have a fantastic team here of individuals that are going to see the city achieve the goals that we have. So, thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Harry. There's so many friends and supporters across everywhere for this entire board, and we can never be thankful enough. There's a couple of folks that I would like to recognize that are here today. I would like to recognize the fact that Mayor Alexander's family is here joining us today to wish us luck. We're very grateful to have their continued support through this whole process, so thank you all for being here. There's also a lot of past and current elected officials sitting in the audience, a couple that I would like to recognize. First of all, I'd like to recognize the mayor of Granite, Corey Brittany Barnhart, is here to celebrate with us today. And we have all the past mayors here with us today. We have Mayor Margaret Klutz. We have Mayor Paul Woodson. We have Mayor Al Haggins with us today. And of course, we have Mayor Susan Klutz with us today. I just hope that no matter where people live, that they have the feeling that I have living in Salisbury. It's easy to say that I love Salisbury, but here's why: community, safe spaces, a team that dedicates themselves selfishly to making policy for everyone, the team that makes it happen. We all saw the stuff on the roads today, right? Those kinds of things. The philanthropic culture that we have here, the entertainments, the best restaurants, the best shops, the best downtown, the best entertainment, all the things, the best coworkers. That's what makes Salisbury so special, and I hope people, no matter where they live, can feel that. But I especially hope they feel that living in Salisbury. And it's not the challenges that we've endured, which we've already had, we'll have more that we'll have to face, but it's how we respond. It's times of adversity that are critical that we remain focused on our strategic plan led by our CEO, city manager Jim Green. And we'll continue that momentum here in Salisbury, which is about community and from the community. We have an exceptional team working every day for all of us, even me as a citizen, so we can't be thankful enough. I know we have a lot of grief we've had to move through, but this is how Salisbury moves forward, is staying focused on the plan. I want everyone to know that there's a reassurance, and I hope today you all feel that, that we'll move forward as a collective body and that no one is above the other on this board. We are a collective voting board. We're all neighbors, we're all friends, and we will all remain a Salisbury for all. So thank you all for being here today. So we're probably going to move on to agenda business if anybody wants to leave. So thank you all for your support for the city of Salisbury.
Where's your twin?
Susan.
The whole Bible. Just the whole Bible. I looked at it and said, oh my gosh, I was so scared.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, council to consider the consent agenda as presented. The council receives these ahead of time to review. Are there any questions from council about the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
No movement?
We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Council to receive public comment. Connie?
Mayor Sheffield, our first speaker is Mr. John Henderlight.
Welcome, Mr. Henderlight.
Mayor Sheffield, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem McLaughlin, congratulations. Councilmember Klutz, welcome back. For the record, I'm John Henderlight, 3 North Road, 28144. My purpose in speaking today is to try to create more public interest, awareness, conversation, and I know what you can and can't do as it applies to, in this case, proposed House Bill 12, which was introduced January 29th, 2025, and sponsored by Harry Warren. The bill, which I'll read to you, and it impacts everyone in this room, and impacts everyone in Salisbury, is Section 1, Chapter 81A of the General Statutes, it's amended by adding a new article to read in accordance with subsection A of Section 260A of the Uniform Time Act, sub-paragraphs to follow. "The state and political subdivision shall observe standard time at all times throughout the year." Section 2 reads, "This act becomes effective March 8, 2026." In other words, daylight saving time goes away in North Carolina. I've done my own research, and admittedly, my search for knowledge has been hindered. I'm even confused by the data arguments and difference of opinions on this subject, and please know that I am most sensitive to something I've learned, the alleged correlation between the annual advent of daylight savings time and the increase in suicides. As a lifelong resident of North Carolina, I can speak firsthand of the enjoyment of outdoor activities here. That enjoyment is enhanced by the extra hour of daylight during the warmer months of spring into fall. You pick any outdoor activity, pick any place, living in North Carolina can be delightful. Many organized activities actually thrive during daylight savings time. I've had two exchanges of emails with Mr. Warren, who's graciously and promptly responded with his rationale for supporting the bill. His reference to scores of studies, verifiable evidence of increased heart attacks, depression, and suicide as a reason to abolish DST. I'd like to see these links so that I can understand better, and I'll impose upon him to present those to me tomorrow. I tell you, three minutes does not provide enough time to present a case for and against daylight savings time. I read about the circadian rhythm disruption allegedly caused by DST results in disruptive sleep. But, you know, I compare that, what if you get tickets to your favorite sporting event, you drive two hours to it, come back, you end up going to bed an hour later? You end up losing an hour of sleep because of daylight saving time. What's the difference? I haven't seen any evidence that says that there are difference. My interest here is to learn more about the credible health, safety, and economic elements for each side of this debate. I've heard blunt statements that DST is pointless. For me, it's not pointless. It's life-giving for how I enjoy it. Also, I see my friends and your friends enjoying it too. That makes the extra hour worth asking for in the discovery process. I know you can't do anything about it as a statutory municipality, but perhaps we can enhance the conversation, we can get a bit more involved in this process. Otherwise, I think, I fear it'll pass without much debate, and that'll impact us all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Connie?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Tim Norris.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of you. Name is Tim Norris. Address is 485 Sales Road, which is in the ETJ district of the county. I'm here this evening to alert the council of a major problem related to traffic conditions in the northwest section of the city, which includes an ETJ district. The current problem is going to be exponentially worsened by the development of the 27.6 acre property located on Sales Road, approximately 800 feet from 45 Sales Road and across the road from North Hills Christian School. There are three requests I will respectfully make to the council this evening, which much appreciation. Number one, I'm requesting that traffic analysis be conducted on the impact of this development to the already existing traffic problem on Sales Road. Fully realize that Sales Road is an NC DOT-maintained road. However, I believe that since we have a major traffic issue already existing on Sales Road, a portion of which is in the city, the traffic analysis should be conducted to determine the impact of safe travel on Sales Road and surrounding neighborhoods. Would need to determine what, if anything, can be done to address this worsening situation. The minimal impact to service slide shown at the February 4th council meeting indicated that the level of service at intersections remains acceptable. I disagree with this slide because it's very dangerous to pull out onto Highway 601 from Sales Road in its current situation. Traffic currently backs up from the intersection of 601 to Windsor Drive, not too far from my driveway, in the mornings and afternoons as North Hills Christian School students are being brought to school and picked up. Should be noted that North Hills Christian School is planning for 800 students. What we see coming is a major traffic capacity problem affecting several neighborhoods near this subdivision. These neighborhoods will be Catawba Heights, Eagle Heights, Country Club Hills, the Reserve at the Country Club, residences on Hawkins Town Road, and also the Crescent. Chatham Creek on Sales Road will have a connection to Glendale Drive and also Kingsbridge Drive, which were in the Country Club Hills neighborhood. This exacerbates the problem. Mr. Austin Pope, engineer with Kimley Horn, indicated that no traffic impact analysis was required for the project per city ordinance. If that's the case, then the ordinance standards requiring a TIA for a project of this magnitude need to be reviewed. My second request is that attention be given to NC DOT-maintained roads such as Sales Road, which was not built to handle high-density traffic. The city and county should take this issue into consideration when subdivisions of this nature are being built. I believe that the city bears some fiduciary or goodwill responsibility in taking proactive steps with the state regarding road capabilities or projects that require the city's approval. This is particularly important for ETJ district projects. Please keep in mind that when future residential neighborhoods as described in the forward 2040 plan are being developed, infrastructural needs such as roads have to be considered. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Leeann Norris.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Leeann Norris. I live with my husband at 485 Sales Road. We will be directly impacted by the traffic created by the newly annexed 27 acres on Sales Road. Mayor Pro Tem McLaughlin inquired about the impact of traffic on Sales Road last week. I'm here to address that question, as I believe it was misrepresented last week. Mr. Austin Pope stated there would be an increase of 953 daily trips. However, he did not substantiate this number. Using data from the Bureau of Transportation, a daily average of 8.82 trips per residence and councilman post average of two cars per residence, the daily trips amount to 1,658. Other data supports that an active family neighborhood generates 20 trips per day, equating to 1,880 trips per day. This is a significant increase in the projected number of trips on Sales Road, over double the projection. In addition to these figures, we must consider the expected daily trips from neighboring Country Club Hills. Chatham Creek will connect to Country Club Hills via Kingsbridge and Glendale. We anticipate that residents from Country Club Hills will use the Sales Road access. Additional traffic from Oxford Downs with 246 residences must be considered, as Oxford Downs connects to Country Club Hills through Rugby Road. Why will residents from Country Club Hills and Oxford Downs choose the Sales Road access? Because the city of Salisbury annexed 128 homes on Hawkins Town Road, all exiting to Old Moxville Road. Furthermore, the town of Spencer annexed an additional parcel with dense construction plans, all exiting to Old Moxville Road. Old Moxville Road is identified as insufficient to handle additional traffic created by developments as Dollar General and Oxford Downs. There is no budget allocated for any corrective action, as reported by Wendy Brindle. Increased traffic on Old Moxville Road equals increased traffic on Sales Road. We expect additional traffic from increased enrollment at North Hills and by new construction on Ridge Road. We are beginning to see the creation of a traffic quagmire. We have very few options to exit our property safely and no other options to transport ourself outside of our existing neighborhood. Ironically, when traffic is backed up at Sales Road, which is a daily occurrence, the solution is to cut through Eagle Heights and right back to the insufficient Old Moxville Road. I am asking for a comprehensive traffic study inclusive of the surrounding neighborhoods to determine the additive impact of opening Chatham Creek to Country Club Hills. I want to welcome our new neighbors to a safe drive to and from home on Sales Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Carl Arthur.
I will say, I had not prepared for this. Carl Arthur, 138 Glendale Drive. And with this addition that has been proposed, it's going to have a major impact on us, but my firsthand experience, I take my grandson every morning to North Hills School and afternoon pick him up. And traffic lines up out on 601 every day, both directions, because of the amount of traffic going in and out of the school. Same thing in the afternoon, when you try to leave there, you come out on Sales Road, and then you get a line of cars lined up waiting to get on 601. And this is without all the new proposed area that they're talking about opening up. So unless something's major done, like four-lane 601 or four-lane Sales Road, if this development is allowed to go through, the traffic is going to be impossible to get in and out of that school and then those other, those adjacent roads. And I've done it every day now for a period of years, and it hasn't gotten any better. It's gotten worse. The school's grown, so you're going to have more personnel leaving and coming in every day. So I think you need to take a hard look at how this is going to be done, traffic stays, should be mandatory, and come up with a better plan than what's laid out right now.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur.
Okay. Last time I had a talk was in the military, so I hadn't done this in a while.
Great job. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Arthur.
I have plans to speak, but I agree.
Yeah. We'll take it. Just for the record, Ms. Mary Arthur said she agrees.
Got it. Mayor, our last speaker is Mr. Michael Kirksey. Welcome, Mr. Kirksey.
It's good to see you, council. My name is Michael Kirksey, a local resident here in Salisbury. And unfortunately, now, it's become very difficult for a lot of the residents on the west end community, because I didn't really make a speech today, but I'm just going to get to the point. On the 13th of this month, I've had around eight bullets come through my front door and windows, and fortunately, I was upstairs doing paintings, and none of those hit me. I think I know who did it. I've been witnessing people sell drugs on my block for the duration of their tenancy there on my block. Nothing has been done. I have not reported anybody selling drugs, but it's becoming a problem where I'm, my house is being shot up. I haven't really had much sleep since the 13th of this month, like a week ago. And I'm asking that the burn grant for the criminal justice, that the council oversee that. I know we was one- I know we was once promised cameras in our community. And there's a lot of seniors in my community that is very unsafe at night. They hear bullets all the time. They are afraid to come out of their house, but now it's hit my house. Bullets have rained through my house after 10 o'clock at night. And right now, it's very scary times. There's been a lot of shootings and people have been killed on the West End. I don't know if anybody's been brought to justice or what happened or what has or what's been done about this, but I'm asking that council oversee the burn grant and allow any senior or any residents on the West End to provide them with the proper surveillance cameras that they may need because my camera didn't catch the shooter. And so I just want the council to consider the unsafety of my community, and I'm sure a lot of people who live on that community will echo the same things that I'm echoing so, or saying. And so I would like us to have the proper equipment in our communities so if we are attacked or shot and if we're dead man can't talk. So I just want us to get what was promised to us. And I'm tired of these bullets. I'm tired of these drug dealers in my community doing what they want to do and there's no consequences for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Connie? No more speakers. Mayor.
All right. Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment section. I know I'm going to turn it over to a moment to City Manager Green to address some of the things. I know the situation at Sales Road, we've recently had Wendy Brindle working on that. And we did have that last week as well as a public hearing at last week, last meeting. It felt like last week, everybody. I know that they, the development in question can happen by right. So, Mr. Green, you have anything else to add?
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Certainly happy to have our transportation director Wendy Brindle come up tonight and address any questions you have. As the mayor stated, this was approved as an annexation at the last meeting. It's NRETJ. The zoning would allow the development by right, but Wendy and her team have been evaluating and working on transportation issues. It is, as stated, a NC DOT road, so they're working with the NC DOT on that. Happy to have Wendy add anything and share with council, but also happy to have Wendy get with the speakers tonight to provide more information, answer any questions they may have.
Yes, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Wendy? Thank you. Good evening, council. And thank you, Mr. Green. As you heard from the speakers, Sales Road is an NC DOT road. It is NRETJ and the development in question is a by-right development. It did not trigger DOT or city requirements for a traffic impact analysis, so a full traffic impact analysis was not done. However, in initial conversations back several years ago, DOT did, there were some other things proposed and DOT did request a preliminary study or findings. And so that was provided to us. Our traffic engineer, Victoria Trexler, did take a look at those numbers in terms of ADT, the total volume on Sales Road with the additional traffic. What we have not done specifically is look at the impact of the school drop-off, so that is something we can get with DOT on and take a look at. Our new transportation director, Jared Mathis, comes from DOT in Division 10. He has indicated that there may be funds through DOT to study school queuing, which could possibly help with this. As far as Moxville Avenue goes, the city did request through our STIP process, potential upgrade to Moxville Avenue to widen that. The benefit to cost was not there. The project scored very low, so that won't be moving forward this year. That doesn't mean we can't ask for it in future years, but right now there is nothing planned. But I can say on Moxville Avenue, some of the developments that were referred to did have to provide improvements for entry and exit of their neighborhoods. So that is one good thing we got from that. But with just the ADT and the addition of the traffic from the proposed development, the level of service does remain acceptable. Again, we haven't looked specifically at their school drop-off and pickup times, but that's something that we can follow up on.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Mayor, could I mention too, appreciate Mr. Kirksey. Well, first, any questions for our transportation director?
I guess you said we look at the school. I've driven down that road and it's, I know they've had police out there try to direct traffic and some other things, and it is backed up no matter what turn you try to get into. Is there, you said talking about the school studies, is there a method that we can start the process to take a look at that?
We can, we'll reach out to DOT to see if there's funding to take a look at. We can do a study with in-house staff and provide data to DOT, so we will have to work hand in hand with them. This is a very common problem. Just in the last two years, we've done similar things on Jake Alexander Boulevard, at Eisenberg, and also at Salisbury Academy. We looked at that as one study. Recommendations for that did not recommend improvements on Jake, but did have some recommendations for the schools themselves. So we'll take a look at what funding might be available through DOT, but regardless, we'll actually start gathering data and work with DOT on that study as well, so.
Is there existing deceleration lanes at the school on Sales Road now?
No, I think Sales Road is just a two-lane road, if I'm not mistaken.
Potentially, deceleration lanes could help with some of the...
Potentially. And I apologize, I'm not super familiar with Sales Road and that area because it's outside of our, I don't deal with it a whole lot, but I don't believe there is. And yes, that could be, could be a potential.
And as far as the development, I would assume it would involve deceleration lanes as well?
So, right now, I'm not aware of any requirements that DOT is putting on that development. However, the construction plans are in for review, so we can take a look at those. But again, I don't believe that DOT is requiring any type of deceleration lane there. I could be wrong about that, but we'll double check.
Wendy and her team will continue to work with NC DOT, but I'm sorry, I suppose you had a question, Tim.
Go ahead. 200 houses. You made a comment just then that from, that disregarding the school drop-off issue, that the thinking by NC DOT, I presume, was that the road was sufficient to handle the traffic from the new development?
That is, with existing traffic plus the additional, and I believe the development has 94 single-family homes, so that's what we've based the calculations on, yes.
Who made the calculations? We did or NC DOT?
So initially, DOT received a scoping study from a consultant with the developer. Those, that was in 2022, I believe, or maybe even before then. Because the new development was slightly different, it didn't trigger any requirements, but we have that data. So we used that initial data and added to it to come up with, the city, our traffic engineer, used that to come up with some calculations just to see the impact at some of the intersections.
So, from what one of the commenters said, that, I didn't write the exact number down, but that that impact analysis that we have was that these 94 homes would result in about 800 traffic, new traffic entering and exiting Sales Road per day, correct?
It'll actually be a little over 1,000.
Little over 1,000? So...
And that's the generation of that traffic with, there are connections to other places, and I think...
They're not happy.
Yeah. And I think we assumed, we tried to be as conservative as we could and assume the worst that we could, specifically at the intersection of Sales and Ennis. So about 80% of that generated traffic, we looked at, the PM peak seemed to be one of the worst, and so we looked at that for our evaluation.
So, so the traffic, the 1,000 extra cars per day is at Sales and Ennis, not at Sales Road coming out of the development, correct?
It's also there, yes. But as we looked at our, we did our evaluation, we have to make assumptions on which way traffic will go exiting and entering the development. So we try to be very conservative on what seemed to be the most impacted intersection, which would be 601 and Sales Road. So we don't have a full evaluation. We have spot evaluations based on that preliminary data at this time.
So, development with about 100 houses is 200 cars, so we're basically saying that each car is going to enter industry two and a half times a day. So if somebody leaves and comes back, that's their two, and every other house would then have one car coming in and out. That number just seems really low, that you'd have a couple hundred cars only a day, that a couple hundred cars would only add 1,000 entrances and exits per day. Number just seems low to me.
And again, it's based on 94 single-family homes and we use the trip generation rate. I don't do this every day, so I can't tell you that rate, but I think it's somewhere around nine trips per day per home. So I think, I think the actual number was about 1,600 or so trips per day. It was over 1,000. So that is what we've used for our evaluation, and then about 80% of that we assume goes to 601 and Sales Road.
Nine trips a day?
About. I think it may be a little less.
Is it 1,000 or 1,600? That's pretty, I mean, a 60%, that's a 60% differential?
And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
That's okay. I'm not crossing, I'm not trying to cross, I'm just trying to catch the facts.
Yeah, so, so the actual rate, thank you. She has the data.
I'm not going to cross-examine. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, good evening, council. Some of the ADT that Wendy is speaking about that's generated from the 94 homes is right under 1,000 trips, and that's based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, Institute of Transportation Engineers. So this what's used across the nation for any development that goes in. Sorry, that's the first thing I caught when I was walking up here. I don't know what else I can maybe clarify.
So it's about 1,000, that's what I remembered?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so 94 homes is about 100. It's easier to use 100 than 94. So 100 into 1,000 is about five trips a day per house, right?
How it's...
I know you're using some table that's been somewhere.
Yeah, it's broken down graphically and with equations. It's not broken down like per house. This is what, X, Y, and Z. So these rates take into account not only the homes, so the residents that live there, it also includes like your mail, your Amazon packages that come to your house. So this includes everything, so it's not a breakdown by house, it's a general overview of an equation that calculates it. I don't know if that made it...
One of those little strips in the road and do our own count and figure out how much traffic's already there?
So we do, DOT does counts yearly on their roads, and there's about 4,000 vehicles per day currently on Sales Road.
Coming on to Ennis Street?
Um...
I mean, coming on to 601?
4,000 two-way. I don't know the distribution of that traffic, but in a 24-hour period, there's about 4,000 vehicles per day on Sales.
We're going to add 100 houses and get 1,000 more?
And I...
I'm just saying, I'm questioning DOT's numbers. That's what I'm saying.
Well, and I actually believe it's a little, she's done the study, so she knows what she's looked at in terms of evening peaks and things of that sort. I do believe it's a little over 1,000 total, but I don't want to question her data. She does a great job, so, but we did just look at PM peak as our marker, and so that could be impacting that number. It gets a little complicated when you're looking at percentages during PM, AM.
You know, I really appreciate these opinions because when we had the Dollar General issue, we had, you know, I got 200, 300 emails opposing it. Planning Board opposed the Dollar General. The argument was traffic, and two weeks later, the very next council meeting, the development, you know, two tenths of a mile up the road called Oxford...
Oxford Station.
Oxford Station has 200 homes in it, and that whole neighborhood didn't peep. We didn't even have one person complain about traffic. And at that time, I said, you're telling me that you got 400 new cars and you're worried about a Dollar General? And you're not worried about, you know, 200 houses unloading, you know, right beside the Dollar General? I mean, it was really a peculiar experience we had as city council, you know, because the Dollar General was going to cause all this problem and then 200 houses weren't going to cause a problem. I'm glad they've raised it because I think both are going to be a problem because both of those roads are inadequate and we don't have any control over them, right? Because they're NC DOT roads.
They are NC DOT maintained roadways.
There's going to be a problem.
Well, I think we appreciate your all's research on that. Mr. Green, I think you have kind of the scope of our concern of the DOT roads, so...
We will continue to work with the NC DOT and evaluate this and appreciate the work for Victoria is, of course, our traffic engineer and Wendy, our transportation director, so they will continue to evaluate. The other comment, I appreciate Mr. Kirksey being here and sharing his concern. First, on the cameras, it is a priority of our police department. In fact, this morning, I was involved with a conversation with the chief on trying to get permission to put some cameras on some poles. So we continue to prioritize that and look for those opportunities to put additional cameras in West End and in other areas of the city as well. Mr. Kirksey also mentioned some concerns he had with shooting in the neighborhood and drugs and other things. I know the chief is aware of those concerns. He has assigned some police officers, some detectives, to work with Mr. Kirksey and investigate this. So appreciate him being here tonight. Police Department is aware and working closely with Mr. Kirksey.
All right. Thank you, Jim. We appreciate that follow-up. Moving on to agenda item number eight, council to consider a text amendment to the Land Development Ordinance to amend Chapters 2, 3, 11, and 18 regarding outdoor athletic facilities. Our presenter is Land and Development Services Director, Philip Lookadoo.
So, as stated, this is a proposed amendment to our Land Development Ordinance to add athletic facilities outdoor. This was brought to us as an application and the, let's see, so the submitted application is, or was, to create this as a permitted land use, and it addressed a couple of things. One was size and it affects facilities up to 10,000 seats. And then we looked at the height, which is in a couple of categories, bleachers, stands, backstops, states that they shall not exceed 76 feet in height, fences 10 feet in height, and the outdoor lighting used to illuminate the fields shall not exceed 170 feet. So that went, that went before TRC and staff reviewed it, made some recommendations. It went before the planning board in, on 116 of this month, and that's the proposal that I will go for next, which is our recommendation. You see in, highlighted in yellow, you see that athletic facilities outdoor permitted with standards in the GR and CI District. with standards in the GR and CI district. And when a use is permitted with standards, essentially that means that it's allowed, but there are some other considerations that have to be present or, or met, uh, in order for it to, to be permitted. And so those are, those are, we'll start here, but just real quickly, we'll, what we'll look at are size, setback, uh, height, access, um, parking and lighting, and then we'll go over what the, the standards are for the CI district or, um, and then the GR district. So the first thing is, is we kept the, uh, application for the, for the application request for the size of, uh, facilities not to exceed ten thousand, uh, seats, and then we, um, looked at a, um, a setback, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda go over it, but there's a diagram that explains it a lot better in, in just a moment, but essentially, uh, we s- we proposed a twenty-five foot setback from all property lines, and then at that setback line, you would have a, a height requirement. And so we're gonna go, uh, over that, but you'll notice, uh, in the, in the last sentence of this, it states that the expansion of those uses defined as athletic facilities outdoor by this ordinance and in existence prior to February eighteen of twenty twenty five shall not be subject to the twenty-five foot setback, and so I'll go over that in a moment. The, the height, and I'll, I'll, this is how it's enumerated, but I'll go over that in this diagram. So you'll notice in the diagram that at the property line, it, it reflects that twenty-five foot setback, and that would be for new facilities. Okay, so, and at that twenty, or at that twenty-five foot setback line, there would be a height maximum of thirty-five feet. And from twenty-five feet to a distance of fifty feet, that height limit would increase one foot for every foot in setback, up to a, a sixty-foot, um, height. From fifty feet to a hundred feet, um, or for another eighty feet, then it would increase one foot of height for every two feet in distance away, and we cap it at a hundred feet. And this is to, essentially to, to work these facilities in with the neighboring, uh, properties to, to kinda maintain their character so that the intensity is not as great at that property line, and then still respect those facilities that, um, that are existing. So I'm back up just a moment to, to this, and so, uh, we give it a couple of examples in the, in the ordinance that says, so for example, a, a building at twenty-six feet would have a maximum height of thirty-six feet, so that's that one for one, and then a, a building, um. At fifty-two feet would be a maximum height of sixty-one feet, so that's, it's getting into that higher ratio, so. Access, so each new facility has to have access on a major or minor thoroughfare, uh, as adopted by our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and then existing facilities, uh, recognizing that they may need to expand, uh, added a provision that said that they have to be within sixteen hundred feet of one of those facilities. And then this out, the requirement number three essentially states that practice fields are not required, uh, to meet these requirements. Okay, so, uh, buffering, we do require a, a buffer, and it is basically a, um. A twenty-foot wide opaque buffer that has large evergreen shrubs or trees, and then it goes forth and states the minimum, uh, size of planting and, and, uh, immaturity. And then it also states in number two that buffers are only, uh, required when there is an adjacent residential land use. And then we also state that these, so there is a landscaping section, as you're all aware, in, in our ordinance, these, uh, regulations supersede those in eight point seven, uh, for other landscaping regulations. And parking. So parking, we're saying one space for five seats at a minimum and one space for two seats at a maximum. We, uh, as our ordinance is, uh, currently requires, there is a minimum five percent of vehicle spaces for, um, um, I'm excuse, five percent of vehicle spaces provided, um, you have to have that number as bicycle parking spaces. And then, um, we also say that these, a- as we did in the previous section, these requirements supersede the table in ten point three for required parking, and then everything else in the parking ordinance, i.e. the drive aisle widths and design criteria have to be met. The other area that we work with is, is in chapter eleven, which is in our lighting code, actually, let me back up. Lighting is coming up. But the, uh, in the GR, uh, district, because there are some facilities that, that are, uh, whether it's schools or, or whatnot, are in, uh, GR, general residential, uh, we added provisions in there that allowed, um, for those facilities to, to be expanded, and then we also say that no, uh, no new facilities can be built in that GR district, so it would require a rezoning at that point. The, uh, other section in chapter eleven, uh, we added into the, into subsection A, the, just the term, uh, uh, outdoor athletic facilities for applicability, we added in subsection B that the mounting heights for the outdoor recreational facilities shall be unlimited, uh, because not knowing where they, how, how high those poles may need to be to adequately light the facilities, we address that in just a moment in, in another section. And then we say that the, um, sub- subsection D, that this is not applicable, uh, light spillage is not applicable for the, um, outdoor recreational lighting, again, because that's, that's addressed in, in subsection I. Uh, in subsection I, we're removing the section that states, uh, because of their unique requirements for nighttime visibility and limited hours of operation of lighting, active recreation areas such as for ball fields and tennis courts are not considered in this chapter, and so basically we're saying in here that lighting fixtures for these uses shall be cast toward, uh, or aimed at the elimination that, that falls within the primary playing area, um, so that direct light illumination is, is not directed off-site. And then it's, unless it's otherwise noted, that all the other, uh, sections for outdoor recreational lighting. Okay. And then in chapter eighteen, finally, we have, that is our, uh, chapter for definition, so we're adding that or defining that use, and then removing ball fields and tennis courts from the recreational facilities outdoor, um, definition. Again, the technical review committee reviewed this, and, um, and I got my dates mixed up earlier, the technical review committee reviewed this on January sixteen and recommended some changes. The Planning Board reviewed this on January twenty-eight, and unanimously, uh, found the amendment to be consistent with the Forward Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan, and then voted six to one to recommend approval, uh, of the language, uh, proposed by staff, subject to the removal of the twenty-five foot setback requirement for, um, outdoor, athletic facilities outdoor existing as of February tw- eighteen, twenty twenty-five. That concludes my report, if there are any questions?
Thank you, Philip. Um, oh, council have any questions now for Philip, or?
Just have one.
Go ahead.
As I understand it, uh, Catawba agrees with this.
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Because there's, you know, there were, uh, there's been a lot of negotiation going back and forth, and I was told earlier today by somebody in the city, not by Catawba, because they've called me, of course, uh, as they probably called everyone, but, but they agree with these changes, is that correct?
Y- yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And from what I understand, we have, um, spoke to the, the other two people who have existing stadiums, Salisbury High School and Livingstone, and there seems to be no concern there, we've made that happen.
Correct, not that I'm aware of, and, and I've, I've, I sent out a, um, an email with a link to the, all the proposed changes to all the heads of school in the, uh, in the city of Salisbury, including all private schools.
Gotcha. Any questions now for council? If not, I'll go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing, if anybody wants to speak for or against the proposed, um, text amendment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, first, congratulations for those of you who have sworn in.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Prince, I'm a land use attorney, and I am here representing Catawba College. Um, you're probably more familiar with my colleagues, Tom Terrell and Ladidra Matthews, but I'm here filling in for them, and since the question was raised, I just thought I'd jump up and say, the Catawba College would be grateful for your support of the text amendment as modified by the Planning Board to allow that exemption. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against? Uh, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to council for any further discussion. Seeing none, if someone feels moved to motion, does that make sense?
I make a motion, the city council hereby finds and determines that adoption of an ordinance amending chapters two, three, eleven, and eighteen of the Land Development Ordinance of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina is recommended by the Planning Board, and underlined or stricken herein is reasonable in the public interest and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Forward Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending chapters two, three, eleven, and eighteen of the Land Development Ordinance of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
We have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Philip, thank you so much for your and your team's work on this.
I can see it from my house.
All right, moving on to agenda item number nine. Council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to recognize the change in scope and to adjust funding the project C dash five six zero three H, a sidewalk on North, on Brenner Avenue, between Statesville Boulevard, Hurrah Street, and intersection improvements at Brenner and Link Avenue, presenters, Transportation Director Wendy Brendel and incoming Jared Mathis, welcome.
Good evening, again, um, and just for the record, I want to quantify that I double-check trip gen rates, and, and it is about nine hundred vehicles per day, and that is based on about eight point nine trips generated per day, so I apologize for that confusion.
I was just looking for information.
Engineers can't do math in their head on the spot for some, or this one can, so.
Thank you, Wendy.
Um, so, uh, this evening we are bringing to you supplemental agreement for Project C fifty-six oh three H, um, and this project has been around, um, since prior to COVID, um, this is one that was impacted by COVID, uh, and we've had some definite increase in costs, um, since the, the first estimate, and we have received some additional funding. And, um, although I've been with the project for a long time, Jared is learning all of these projects, um, and is going to make the presentation, uh, for the additional funding for this supplemental agreement.
Mayor, Mayor, Pro-Tim, uh, city council, it's good to see you. Like Wendy was saying, this is, uh, for the supplemental agreement for C fifty-six oh three H, um, is a sidewalk project, stretches from Statesville Boulevard to Hurrah Street, so we'll go ahead and get started. As it relates to the strategic plan, sustainable infrastructure, uh, specific strategies, implement and adopt capital improvement program, including projects for general fund, wanted to put that in there, so. But like I was saying earlier, um, I've got a vicinity map on the, on the screen, as you can see is, uh, directly across from the sidewalk project is the VA, and it stretches from Hurrah to Statesville Boulevard. There's also, uh, a safety improvement project going on at Link and Brenner Avenue, um, this will be two left turn lanes, uh, one going into the VA, one going down Link, and there's also pedestrian improvements, um, at that intersection and at Statesville Boulevard. A little brief funding history, and I'll, it'll roll into what, what we're, what we're trying to do, um, like Wendy was saying, the project originally was, uh, the original agreement was in July of two thousand eighteen, um, this was for CMAC funds of a total of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, eighty percent of that was federal, and the twenty percent match was, was our participation of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, this covered all design phases and construction. Then like Wendy was saying, COVID delayed us, and then across the state, it delayed projects for years on, on end, so as we went back and figured out that we needed more funds, um, in May of two thousand twenty-four, city council adopted a resolution to, I guess, reallocate funding from BL zero zero three four, this is a Jake Alexander sidewalk project, um, that the city, there were some design hindrances there, um, and the city elected to go a different route with the funding, obviously this is a great fit for it, additional eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, uh, approved by CRNPO and the city council, so, and that'll be an additional a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, um, for our local participation. And new funds that we have is the carbon reduction program, the CRP funds, uh, we noticed that we are still short even after obtaining eight hundred and forty-five thousand, so here we have three hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, this is, uh, would cover the remaining costs for utilities and construction, as we have already designed the project and certified right away, so we're ready to ask for construction authorization. But this will be the same funding, uh, tier as far as eighty percent federal, twenty percent local match, so another additional seventy-six thousand dollars. So in summary, um, overall project cost, one point nine million, we've expended a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, that covered preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition, um, and local participation, all those numbers added together is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So, with that being said, we're requesting city council to recognize the SA and approve the city manager of, of signing this SA, um, but this, the city council needs to acknowledge there's two separate funding sources coming to this project through the SA, which is additional CMAC funds of eight hundred and forty-five thousand and the CRP funds. So, and then once this is done, we will ask for construction authorizations, is there , uh, any comments, you wanna add anything?
Um, the only thing I would add is that we knew about the increase in costs, um, last year when we were preparing for the budget we're currently in, so those funds are recognized in our budget currently.
Thank you, Wendy, thank you, Jared, you answered the magic question, was this in our budget? So, uh, that's always the magic question, Jared, just so you know. Mr. Green, anything else to add?
Just clarification, uh, Wendy, um, the gen item talked about a scope change, I, I think that was a misprint, scope is not changing, just this is recognizing we've been able to receive additional funding.
That is correct, yes, the scope has remained the same throughout the project.
Council, uh, any questions, concerns?
Looks like the sidewalk is gonna be on the eastern side of Brenner Avenue, across from the VA. How is the existing electrical infrastructure gonna be impacted by the installation of sidewalk? You've got a substation there, uh, near the railroad tracks, and so there's a double circuit, uh, primary feed, which is substantial to relocate if, if it becomes necessary. Also, I'm assuming there's gonna be new curb and gutter installed.
Yes, there will be new curb and gutter in the areas where it does not exist or where it's, um, so deteriorated, it needs to be replaced, there are some, there are few short sections that have existing. Um, utility, uh, coordination was considered in plan design, um, and there are a few, um, relocations of some poles, but nothing major, um, along that side, so as we move into construction, we'll be getting the estimates from Duke Energy for some of those relocations, yes.
If it was just a single circuit, single-phase feed, I wouldn't question it, but just my knowledge of the infrastructure, it's fairly significant.
Absolutely, yes.
And the cascading effect associated with relocation.
Right.
Could drive the cost up.
Yes, and the consultant took that into consideration in their estimate, yes.
Any other questions, council? If not, I would, uh, ask for a motion. Any other questions, Counsel? If not, I would, uh, ask for a motion.
I would make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a supplement agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation to adjust funding for Project C dash five, six, zero, three, H as an halo sidewalk on Brenner Avenue between Statesville Boulevard and Hurrah Street and intersection improvements at Brenner and Link Avenue.
Motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Jared, Wendy, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to agenda item number ten. Counsel to receive a draft of the traffic calming policy. Presenters are Transportation Director Jared, thank you for remaining, and Traffic Engineer Victoria Trexler, thank you for coming back up. Turn it over to you guys.
Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, City Council, again, thank you for the opportunity. This is the traffic calming policy. First and foremost, I want to thank Victoria for steering this and doing the research and compiling all this information. I do want to give a shout to Vicky as well. Vicky had played a role, so, um, they, I appreciate their hard work and dedication on this. As you see in front of us is the traffic calming policy. This has been in the works for many years, um, and it's just now come to fruition since we do have a new traffic engineer, so. As it relates to the strategic plan, we thought it fit best in healthy, safe, and engaged neighborhoods. So, want to put that little snippet in there. For the policy overview, um, I took, all these bullet points come from each phase or each, each section in the policy. So, the purpose, traffic calming objectives, streets addressed under the policy, warrants, procedures, funding, traffic measures, implementation, and post-project evaluation. We're going to hit on each of these. Uh, you have the traffic calm policy in front of you, and I should have led with this, but this is for information purposes only. Obviously, we're not going to be doing any consideration tonight, um, just looking for feedback. And starting tonight, uh, will be a two-week public comment period, and the JOT form QR code will be on, on this presentation, and it'll be available on our transportation website, so, for public comment. Moving right along, the purpose of the traffic common policy is to create safe streets. Obviously, safety is our number one, number one goal here. Um, thoroughfare, uh, reduce thoroughfare tra- traffic, reduce speeding while use, while guiding and improving staff's response to traffic calming requests. And that is another thing. It gives us, uh, order of operations in order to process a request. Identify processes for physical and non-physical measures. These, uh, are indicated below, however, we'll go into more detail as we get through the presentation. I also want to point out, I should have mentioned this on the last slide, but there, I put snippets of recommended physical measures that we could implement, so just keep, keep on the lookout as we go through. Traffic calming objective, um, reasonable motor vehicle feeds, uh, feeds, speeds. Increase safety, reduce collision severity and frequency, and then in the long term is reduce the need for police enforcement. So, this will, uh, if permanent installations usually generate less speeding, so. As we move right along, uh, streets addressed by this policy are local streets, uh, with dedicated public right-of-way and accepted by the city. And also, streets that provide access to motor, for motor vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrian traffic. This is not intended for D O, N C D O T, N C D O T maintained roads, private streets, or alleys. And they're on your rights to speed hump. Warrants for traffic calming policy. All warrants need to be met in order for us to, to consider a traffic calming measure. It needs to be a city two-lane street. I did want to point out that we do have some one-way traffic streets, uh, so that might need to be considered in, in this policy as well, but we're open to any questions or comments. Classified as a thoroughfare. There is also two other points I want to bring up. Cannot be primary emergency routes or transit routes. There is a, not a way around it, but a way to, to address those routes is more enforcement and education. Maybe putting up a digital speed limit sign or a speed trailer. We can address those there. But I wanted to point those out. It is labeled in the policy, so. The next speed limit must be thirty-five miles per hour or less. Typically, when you get up to speeds in the fifties, forty-five, these are less effective and more destructive, so we got to keep that in mind. During any one-hour period, the average speed must be above thirty miles per hour. During any one-hour period, one-hour period vehicle count must be or exceed one hundred vehicles. Must be two years since the last application on the same street. It kind of gives us a buffer between requests. And then must be two years since the measure implemented or removed on the same street. Is there any comments so far, questions? The procedure for evaluating, evaluation request, as you see on the screen, this is the traffic calming study request form. This is what, I guess, the travel in public will be submitting if they want to request traffic calming. They must submit the request. It is in appendix A in the policy. The city receive a petition of seventy-five percent of the property owners that are affected, uh, specifically on the street. Third step would be to staff to collect and analyze data, uh, traffic counts, speed, speed analysis, crash data, and location of where we would be putting this traffic calming device. Staff will review of analytical data. This is where we would bring in emergency services, uh, specifically police, uh, and fire to, to look over this and, or look over the current, or whatever is going on, whatever the request is. And then number two in that sub-bullet is the ranking system. The ranking system is a point system, how we can judge, or not judge, but I guess rank each traffic calming po- each specific traffic calming, uh, location. This will give us our priority list. And then, um, duration of a hundred and eighty days, that gives us time to evaluate the process and come up with these, uh, all the different information that we need to gather, so. And then we'll come to City Council. So, if warrants are not met, there'll be a negative recommendation. So, all warrants must be met. If they do not meet a warrant, there will be a negative recommendation. And then if warrants are met, we would come to City Council with a, a cost estimate, uh, along with concepts, so. And then whenever we do come to City Council, um, I think this will take, take place more in step four, non-physical. That's when the process will start. Non-physical measures are, are implemented prior to any physical measures. So, that's education, enforcement. That's where police comes in, so.
You're going to have a question on that. City receive a position of seventy-five percent of the property owners, so whomever's making the request has to get seventy-five percent of the property owners on board. We're not going out doing that. That comes to us. Okay, great. Thank you.
Next, we have funding. I know this will be a fun topic. The general fund is always a possibility to obtain funding. Special assessments, that's something that is new to me. City to authorize construction against benefit to property within the city limits, which may be levy a tax. This is, uh, an option that can be removed, um, if the City Council does not like it. And then next is private funding. People have the, the opportunity to accelerate the process if their, their, I guess, traffic calming request is warranted by all warrants. As you can see, the next bullets are what the private, uh, private citizen would have to come up with ninety percent prior to advertisement, then a hundred percent thirty days prior to City Council approval. And this does give us the option to have private funds with city forces completing the work.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
So, if, if I want to speed bump on my street, which would be kind of silly since I'm on a dead end, but, uh, if I want a speed bump, I can pay for it myself?
Yeah.
Does the city have to, but the city has to approve it?
Yes. Has to meet all warrants.
And if it's a dead end, it's probably not going to meet the warrant.
There's one car there I'd like to slow down on my street, uh, but.
Little Mini Cooper?
Let's say it is.
Not a Mini Cooper.
Fun of a private.
Top of the street, not the bottom.
It's fun of my private donations, then is the city going to be responsible for that cost associated further down? To fix, let's say, the speed bumps, it gets damaged, or?
There is talks of, of maintenance within the policy itself, um, but I do think that we'd take the blunt of it.
Or do they set up like a escrow if they do a donation that if anything happens that they would?
Now, that could be a possibility. I don't think it's outlined in the policy right now, so, yes. Any other questions?
How much does a speed bump cost?
I think three to four thousand dollars. Is that what it? There's a range, uh, for each traffic calming measure in the back of the policy itself.
It also depends if it would be a, um, permanent solution. There's also the ones that are movable, which are cheaper, which would be a temporary measure that could be installed prior to a more permanent measure. So, like the plastic speed humps you see that, um, some like food lines put in as temporary measures.
Say, so if a neighborhood gets together, decides they want, the neighborhood's probably not going to build a traffic circle, but if they want some speed bumps, you know, something to traffic calm, and they can raise the money, then they, it comes to City Council, goes through a procedure. Wha- what is our, uh, decision criteria? I mean, do we just, whether we like it or not, or?
Yes, and if it's fundable, we got to make sure we have, or they're going to have the money, right? So, you said? We got to make sure that we can, uh, or y'all have the observa- or the right to say yea or nay. And that'll be generally based on what we recommend as far as if they meet the warrants or if they don't. So, I hope, go ahead.
Yeah, if they meet the warrants for, for volume, speed, um, minor thoroughfare, like the, the types of roadways, all depends on what, you can't just say like, hey, I want a speed hump because I want one, you know what I mean? Um, so, it's going to have to meet the certain criteria, which is volume, traffic, data.
Yes, I, I, Mayor, Members of Council, I was just going to add that there is a process. A lot of times we hear neighborhoods jump to, can we get a, a speed bump? And you're hearing there's a process to review that, in particular, public safety. Uh, I can tell you right now, Police Chief and Fire Chief were up here, they would share concerns about speed humps and speed bumps, so. Before we bring it to Council, staff would review it. We would work closely with public safety. There's a process. It's just not whether we like it or, or don't like it. There's a process to justify, and it may be other traffic calming measures are more appropriate for the situation. So, staff would review it, work with public safety, other departments, and then eventually bring that to Council.
That was going to be a question I was going to ask about, um, because I remember from the past, emergency vehicles and the concern that the police and fire had with, um, being able to get where they need to go quick enough. So, and, and I know that's an important consideration.
Yes, ma'am, that concern is still there, and, and this was reviewed with public safety, uh, and want to make sure that they're still a part of the process, so don't want to give any impression that, um, speed bumps are, are something that are allowed now. That's, uh, is an option, but it has to be reviewed, and there are concerns from a public safety standpoint.
And, and we're just, it's just the draft. We're just beginning this process, correct? Okay, great.
I just had one question. Sunset Drive here in Salisbury, is this similar process that they went through? Or was that a city-initiated?
Here comes Wendy.
Sorry, they, they were not here with Sunset Drive. Sunset Drive, um, actually was one of the first projects I did when I came to the city many years ago. They had a forty-eight mile per hour, eighty-fifth percentile speed on a primarily residential street. The first installation of a traffic calming device on there was modified chicanes. They actually had an impact on speed, but the neighborhood hated them, so they remained in place for a while. Then, as we started developing our policy, we wanted some pilot projects. So, we used Sunset Drive as a pilot project for speed humps. So, that was a completely different process, and we, we are using it for evaluation of some of the devices in the traffic calming policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on funding? Okay, we'll move right along. Uh, traffic calming measures, um, you've seen several iterations of what, what the policy will, will allow. Speed humps, speed cushions, raised crosswalks, uh, traffic circles, chicanes, as Wendy mentioned earlier. But the two types we have is non-physical and physical, which is, uh, engineering devices. Any, uh, non-physical contact police for monitoring speeds, uh, neighborhood participation. We can provide, provide brochures, templates, meeting presentations. And I also wanted to point out, these are not traffic calming measures. Children at play signs, stop signs, and traffic signals. And engineered devices, as I was saying earlier, there's, uh, this is the complete list of what the traffic policy, common policy would produce in some instances, so. Design and implementation. Transportation staff will complete the following: design specs and cost assessment. We'll do all that in-house. Plans will be reviewed by police, fire, public works, transit, community plan services, neighborhood representatives. We're going to give us a twelve-month timeframe to do this. And then also costly traffic calming measures can be, uh, intervened with temporary measures. So, and, uh, currently one we have that's coming in March on the west end is at Hurrah and Party. And this is bar- part of the B C J I grant, so coming early to mid-March, if you want to take a drive, and keep in mind, it is temporary. So, it's a, it's not a permanent-looking thing, so just keep that in mind. But it'll be at the middle of March and you'll take a ride around the traffic circle, so. After it's been im- implemented, uh, from a period of twelve to eighteen months, we'll reevaluate and see what kind of impacts we have. We'll receive comments via survey from residents, um, and the same data will be collected, traffic, speed, and volume data, and also diversion data. Some traffic common measures will divert traffic to other city streets, so we'll be collecting traffic, uh, analysis elsewhere as well. But depending on impacts, we could remove the traffic common device, uh, or we can upgrade from a temporary to a permanent, so. And then this is, uh, question slide. Also, a link to the JOT form for public comment, and this is the link to our transportation website where you can find the policy itself. Any comments, questions?
Jared, how long did you say this comment was going to be open?
Two weeks, fourteen days.
Okay. That's a lot of information. Thank you so much, the whole team for sharing. Counsel, any follow-up questions or anything? Mr. Green, anything else to add?
Mayor, Members of Council, again, just getting your feedback tonight. We look forward to the public engagement process as well, but appreciate transportation working on this and working internally. Before it came to you, you heard Jared talk about a lot of times has, has been spent on this, but, uh, it's something, again, we've heard a lot from the community. It's consistent with your strategic plan, so we look forward to continuing to get input and then bringing it back to you at a later time.
Got you. Thank you, guys. I think anytime we can do anything to create safer spaces around our city, obviously, we're going to win. And can we just ensure that, like, this is on all of our social media pages, not just we have to go to the city website, that, that people have access to this? As much as possible.
Make sure we get the word out.
Yes, thank you.
I see a thumb up from Fern in the, the back there.
Right, thank you, Fern. Uh, thank you guys so much for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to agenda item number eleven, city attorney's report.
Congratulations, Mayor Sheffield and Mayor Pro-Tim McLaughlin and Councilmember Clutz, and all of councils being full again, so excited to work with all of you. Nothing from our report, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Uh, city manager's report, Mr. Green.
Also, congratulations to all, and it's nice to have someone in this seat. Graham and I were feeling a little lonely down here, so Councilmember Jackson, welcome to this end. Just, Mayor, Council, two things. One, at your City Council retreat, we talked about this time of uncertainty. I've complimented the staff here and the great job they do getting federal and state grants. One, uh, grant that, uh, at least we verbally heard potentially is going to be called back is our home funding, about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have not received anything in writing on that, but, um, something we continue to evaluate, and that directly impacts a project that we just discussed with Counsel, Kessler Mill, and the, uh, neighborhood that's planned at Kessler Mill. And so, we have that project out on the street. And so we have that project out on the street in a request for proposal. We had looked at funding some of the gap, the potential gap for that project with home funds, and so we're still evaluating that. So that project is on the streets. We look forward to getting back proposals and reviewing those, and just wanting to let you know, again, it is uncertain time, and we'll continue to update council as we hear more on that particular federal funding or other state and federal funding. Second thing, it was mentioned earlier, Mayor Sheffield talked about the preparation for potential winter weather tomorrow. I'd like to invite our Public Works Director, Chris Tester, and our Fire Chief, Bob Parnell, up. As the mayor stated, a lot goes into prepping for these winter storms. Public Works takes a lot of that workload, and that's in addition to existing workload from picking up trash, from working on streets, and all the other work that Public Works doing. Same with the Fire Department, in addition to running calls, they're planning for tomorrow and making sure their staff. So I wanted the chief and Chris to update you on what the latest is for the storm is for tomorrow, but also talk about the good work that Public Works, police, fire, and other departments are doing to make sure we're prepared and safe.
We're honored to be before you. Thank you for the time, and just want to reassure you that we are both, and all our partner departments are watching the weather closely, trying to determine what the impact will be. The forecasters of this particular storm, as is often the case, are not confident in exactly what Salisbury is going to get. I know that's a surprise, but at this point, what we are looking for, and we get a lot of communication through Duke Energy and other outlets, including the news outlets from Charlotte, Greensboro, and we specifically watch the National Weather Service for our area. Right now, what we're looking for is one to three inches of snow, starting sometime mid-morning tomorrow, and it lasting about 24 hours and tailing off with some flurries Thursday morning. The aforementioned ice forming seems to have maybe moved a little bit east of us, thank goodness. We don't want all the ice that they were calling for, and so we think at this time that we're primarily snow, maybe a little bit of ice, but not the thick ice that they were talking about early in the week and over the weekend. So my partner here is going to talk about our preparation in the city.
Yep. Thank you, chief. So we just finished brining today. We put out 1,600 gallons of brine. We started on our emergency routes, which is also what we start with on plowing. We also got our fire stations, transit fleet, police, including the parking lots. We additionally got city facilities, city parking lots, and the surrounding sidewalks. We hit the main bus stops, hit the bridges, and our ADA ramps uptown. The equipment and vehicle that we have prepared, all capable trucks with plows and spreaders are ready. Our motor grader is also ready with new blades installed. We have a rubber tire loader with the plow prepped, ready to go. Chainsaws gassed up and sharpened, fueling complete for all trucks, auxiliary diesel tanks, as well as gas cans. Materials on hand are one pallet of Roadrunner ice melt and two 55-gallon drums of the same, and about 150 tons of bulk salt available. I think we're well-prepared.
Yeah, our prep is repeated every storm. A few days before the storm is going to hit, we send out notices to all our departments, just giving the heads up. At the Fire Department, we have a storm prep policy, so we put that out, publish it out, all the fire stations get it, check off what they are supposed to have checked off, and have their equipment ready, like they do about every day. Any questions?
I just like to thank staff, great work, prep, and again, this is with additional, or addition to other work that they're providing. And as far as city hall and whether city hall is closed, typically I work closely with Chris, Police Chief, Fire Chief, System Manager Baker, and we evaluate the roads, and if it's starting to get bad, we, I make the decision on whether or not to close city hall. We make sure we let the public know as soon as we can, also let council know. Rodney's in the back, we coordinate with transit, want to make sure it's safe for our transit drivers and riders as well. So we'll keep you all up-to-date tomorrow and keep the public up-to-date as well. Be safe.
Got you. Thank you so much for the update. Anything else? Jim?
Ma'am, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number 13, we'll move on to council comments. Susan, any comments?
Just, I'm just honored to be here. Thank you all for inviting me and appointing me, and I'm just looking forward to my time, my short time on the council.
Thank you. David?
I want to congratulate you again, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Susan, welcome. It's just joy to have you here. I think I've got the best seat in the House, if you just look from there, look up this way. And I want to thank, you know, the, you know, the city, tomorrow's going to be, I mean, the preparation is great, and the fact that if we have no trouble, you know, nobody will mention it, you know, because you did such a great job planning, and so I hope it's that way. I hope the public stays home, stays out of trouble, doesn't try anything, you know, too desperate. And I think that, from what I've heard, the bigger problem will be Thursday morning, because it's supposed to get up to 35 or 36 tomorrow, which means, and then it's 22 tomorrow night, and so Thursday morning, we can see a whole lot of black ice, and so I think that that's going to be more problematic, and I hope the public's aware of that. And Michael, thank you for your comments. I think that's really important stuff, and I hope we look into that.
Thank you, David. Carlton, any comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Welcome and congratulations to everybody, and look forward to making the city go.
Thank you. Yeah, back to business, right? We've got a full council, ready to keep moving forward, following our strategic plan. Looking forward to, as we get into budget planning timeframe now, so that we have a full set of folks to make that happen. Just would like to, real quick, thank Fern for getting us up and running. Jason normally takes great care of us, he's out for a little bit, so Fern is stepping up, so thank you for that. And then on to mayor's announcements. The Community Appearance Commission and the Tree Board will host the fourth annual We Dig Salisbury event on Saturday, March 1, 2025, starting at 10:00 a.m. until noon at the Miller Recreation Center, which is located at 1402 West Bank Street. The event will include demonstrations on tree planting and pruning techniques, educational booths, raffle prizes, and residents may leave with a redwood or dogwood tree. For more information, contact Alyssa Nelson at 704-638-5235. And I have three trees still growing in my backyard from the first We Dig event, so it has paid off.
One of them are redwood, it's now 8,000 feet tall.
No, they're still just little things, so, but they're still there, so. With that, I would take a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all so much for tonight.